Take pictures and I try to take pictures of the camera whilst I'm working in drag. We got pictures of the sign.
You still have time.
Okay, everybody? Let's call the meeting to order at exactly seven o'clock. We are convening from closed session. I would ask our city attorney to please report on that.
Evening, Mayor and council members. City Council is in closed session this evening. Conference with real property negotiator relating to the properties associated with the Twin Cities Right Away Project. City Council received a report, provided directions to negotiators, and other than that, there's no reportable action.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Powers. Here. Singleton.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Cruz.
Yeah.
Payne. Here. I would invite you to join me in a moment of silent prayer, and that will be followed by the site flag salute by PAC eighty-four, then six, the Bears.
Bears.
Hold our attention. Car guard advance.
United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
If the city clerk would please read the video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. I would now ask for agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions? Then we will go to presentations. We have no presentations, city clerk?
No presentations.
So, public comments?
Okay, under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. First, we have Al Baldwin.
Good evening, Al Baldwin. Of course, one of the concerned citizens of Galt, this community of character, which is beautiful and growing in character. There's only three things I'd like to say. I had an emergency this, uh, last yesterday, day before, and my car got stranded. It was calipers froze and all this thing. I didn't know what to do. We had one car, and, you know, we gotta get to work, and it, and a wonderful thing happened. I guess it's the holiday season, so these things might have to happen. But, uh, Brian's Automotive, I called him, and he made arrangements to take me in right away, which means I don't have a car, of course. So, he got on it right away, did it right away, and I'll tell you, I'm sure glad that the industrial area has Brian's Automotive, has a, has a good repair shop, and he's helping the community in other ways, too, which I can't go into now, because I only have three minutes. Uh, the next thing was, uh, I was at the Lighting of the Tree, and it was just gorgeous. Those new lights you put on that thing, it's just, I mean, you could see it miles away, but it's so beautiful. It, it was just a wonderful ceremony, as I understand, but, uh, I was inside trying to get things going, and, uh, it was, like, amazing. And while I was in there looking, I noticed things and what was going on, so I got home finally, and, uh, I, I had, uh, an email type of thing, very quickly one, and it was from Santa. I have a personal straight shot with him from the North Pole. He was down here for a while that night. He said there was over three hundred children and at least a hundred adults that, uh, he saw and took care of, and it was one of the most, uh, positive experiences he could've had at this time of year. And also, the STAR Group, which is for challenged, uh, kids and families, uh, he was there the night before, and he said that was one of the, the most warming and loving things that he has been to in a long time. It was wonderful, and he had really appreciated, uh, Galt being here, that he could participate in things like this for, and, um, he's looking forward to stopping off in Galt during Christmas and the season to wish you all a Merry Christmas and make sure there's no fires in your fireplace, because sometimes he uses that as a quick in and out, and, uh, he, he wants to tell all the kids to leave cookies for him. His favorite cookie is a chocolate chip, just to let you know. And, uh, if any of the parents are out there and you wanna help your children, uh, bake a chocolate chip cookie, put it in a little saucer, and when he comes down the chimney, he's gonna take one bite out of it, leave the rest on the dish, just to prove that he's there for Christmas, and it's a wonderful Christmas spirit that he wants to show everybody. So, uh, I, I just wanna thank Galt now for him to, with that opportunity, and how you guys are really improving this whole city. It's just been wonderful. So, thank you very much, and he says thank you, too.
Thank you, Al, for all that spirit, all that good Christmas spirit.
Good evening. My name is Mariah Bray, and I am chairman of the Galt U. City Council Committee, and I just wanna give a quick update of what we've been doing the last few months. Starting off in October, we did a monster bash, which we set a not to exceed three hundred dollars, and we ended up spending just over, spending three hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-three cents. But, the mayor, Barbara Payne, was asked to be reimbursed for the seventy-six dollars and twenty-three cents that she paid for it, and our overall, um, profit was thirty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. So, we did approve to reimburse her. After that, we did Lighting of the Tree, which was this last Saturday, which was amazing. We managed to gather about twenty to thirty volunteers who all thought it was the most amazing experience working with the kids. We had a great turnout, it was packed. Everyone enjoyed the parade, so great job with that, you guys. And the next thing we are doing is this weekend, we are doing Crafting with Santa, which is from one to four in the evening, and setup starts at seven AM, and we have about forty volunteers already, and we're planning to get more. It's a pre-register for kids kindergarten through fourth grade, and it's six dollars for the first child, ten dollars for the second, and fifteen for the third, and we have a not to exceed five hundred dollar budget, and this will be at the Chaboya Center. There will be snacks available for, to, for the kids that come, and Santa will be there, of course, and lots of other fun arts and crafts for them to do to keep them entertained. So, I just wanna update you guys on that, and I hope we have your guys' support. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mariah.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you so much.
I like the way they pay attention to the budget.
Yeah.
Notice that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's it for now. I have one for later.
Dan, uh, would you read the consent calendar, please?
We have four, four items tonight. First one, minutes of the special and regular meetings of November fifteenth, two thousand eleven. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, annual report of financial transactions of community redevelopment agencies, inclusive of the housing activity report and annual activity report of the Galt Redevelopment Agency for fiscal year two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, and the fourth one, approval of the treasures report for the period ending October two thousand eleven.
Is there any discussion or questions on any of those items? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second. We have, uh, motion and a couple of seconds. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne? Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Next item.
Next item, City Council's office, Galt Municipal Code, Chapter nine point four four, abusive solicitation. Uh, Councilmember Singleton.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I just wanna bring the, the, this, uh, municipal code nine point four four, uh, because I've had several complaints from citizens, from our own staff, uh, and, uh, and other folks that have been harassed, uh, for spare change and money in front of our store entrances and in the parking lots, uh, inside the store itself. So, to better protect our citizens and the people that patronize these businesses, uh, what I plan to do is, uh, is I'm gonna be organizing a meeting, uh, and I'm gonna notify all the, say, Mark Bailey's and all the other, uh, small businesses, and, uh, gonna get with our police chief and, uh, bring these people together in one place and, uh, give them some better information on, uh, how to fight, uh, people in front of their stores begging for money, because what it do, it drives people away from our businesses and, uh, and, uh, and they feel threatened, and, and our citizens shouldn't have thought of that. Uh, so that's all I wanted to do on, on, uh, why I wanted to bring that up at this, at this time, 'cause it has been a real problem lately.
Uh, and are you asking staff to look into?
Um, you know, at, at first, I was thinking of, uh, wanting to see if we could do something to, uh, add to the ordinance, but, uh, upon further research, I've found that I just wanna do an informational, uh, thing for our citizens and our store businesses.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that forward. Next item, please.
Next item, um, under City Council Office's Resolution two thousand seven dash thirty-six and Galt Municipal Code, Section nine point one two point oh two five A regarding hours of operations in the parks. Councilmember Singleton?
It's me again. Uh, in revisiting this, uh, resolution, uh, two thousand seven dash thirty-six and the Galt Municipal Code, Section nine point one two three point oh two five regarding hours of operation in the parks, uh, myself and other citizens have been concerned, uh, with some of the parks opening, uh, staying open till ten o'clock, uh, at night. Uh, I've been, well, I've been out running errands or going to different meetings, uh, around town, I've noticed young kids and other folks, uh, gathering at some of the parks, particularly, uh, in the areas where, uh, it's the darkest. Uh, so I am asking two things. One, that the resolution two thousand seven dash thirty-six, uh, which specifically states that the skate park be closed at six o'clock, uh, for that to be enforced, uh, 'cause it's not always enforced at this time. Uh, number two, I'm asking that staff bring back a resolution, uh, closing all, uh, unlit parks, uh, at dusk from October first to March thirty-first, uh, unless the city manager or the Disney waists closure for times, uh, for approved events. I think this would be in the best interest of our citizens, uh, as far as fighting back against vandalism and graffiti in our parks and surrounding areas. I feel that ten, ten o'clock during the winter months, uh, and during school season is too late for our youth to be out or the undesirables, uh, to be hanging out at the parks, uh, where it opens up the opportunity for them to get themselves in trouble or even hurt for being where, where they shouldn't be. And that's what I'm asking for tonight is, do I, I don't have to put in two motions, do I, uh, Mr. Ruff?
Um, we would want to have a motion from the council if they agree with, uh, Councilmember Singleton's, uh, request, so the council motion would be to direct staff to provide the resolution as requested by Councilmember Singleton.
And that would be what I'm asking for approval to, uh, have staff bring this back.
Before you call for the question, I'd like to ask staff, do we, don't we have some of the parks that we have, like tennis and volleyball?
I'm sorry, you're right. I, uh, I, uh, I thought, yeah, it's just to the unlit area parks.
Okay. I just wanna make sure you're.
So, the community park where the tennis courts are at and the volleyball parks, it, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't include that, 'cause it is a lit area over there.
I would, I would agree with, uh, asking staff to come back with a report. Maybe we could have further discussion on it.
Okay.
I think it'd be a great idea.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? Uh, city manager, would you ask staff to?
Need a motion?
Uh, yes. Do we have a motion?
I move to bring, um, revisit the resolution regarding, um, Galt Municipal Code, Section nine point one two point oh two five eight. That's the park closures.
One second.
Do you want to make a comment, Councilmember Cruz?
Actually, no, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Singleton on this one.
Okay.
So, we have a. Our stand to bring back a resolution, to bring a resolution for.
Okay. And we have a motion. Is there a second?
Mark.
More seconds?
Mark Singleton.
Sorry, didn't understand that. Um, roll call vote, please.
Okay. Um, this is to bring a resolution back. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Welcome. Okay. Next item, please.
Question, Mayor, before we move on, I wanna make sure that staff understands, we didn't talk about a date. I mean, it's not like we want it tomorrow, and I don't know what city managers', you know, projects are right now, so what, I know we already did the vote, but.
What's our timeline?
How about, how about this as a recommendation, uh, Councilman, you brought it up, maybe you could work directly with, uh.
Absolutely. Absolutely. As long as we don't wait until March.
That'd be nice, Dan.
It shouldn't take too long.
In two thousand fourteen, right? No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Shelton.
Okay. Moving along.
Finance Department? City of Galt Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June thirty two thousand eleven, Memorandum on Internal Control and Required Communications for the year ended June thirty two thousand eleven, and Independent Accountants Report on Compliance with Proposition one eleven, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven Appropriations Limit Increment.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers and community members. This evening, staff is recommending that council accept the following reports that the city clerk actually just mentioned. That is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the Memorandum on Internal Controls and Required Communications, and the Agreed Upon Procedures related to Proposition one eleven. Copies of the reports were attached to staff report, they were also part of the agenda pack on the website, and were actually filed to the city clerk for public review as well. So, um, each year, the city does prepare the financial reports, and it's our way of communicating, communicating to the community financial activities and the financial condition of the city. So, I would like to take a couple of minutes and go over the three reports that are here this evening, and the first one is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and there are three components of that report. Introduction is really called the transmittal letter, and it includes some of our accomplishments, some of those that are highly visible within our community are the, is the construction within the Central Galt Interchange Project, and we all know about the completion of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. So, those are huge projects that are included within the transmittal letter. We also have the improvements at Walker Park, which were completed this past spring. As far as economic development, we had the Fourth Annual Winter Bird Festival. We have the next one coming up next, next month. Um, we know about the Walmart. As of the end of the fiscal year, we were still, um, working on the revised DIR, which was approved subsequently by the Plenary Commission and approved, reapproved the project back in June. We have come to an agreement since that time, but as of June thirtieth, that was the status of that project. As far as redevelopment agencies, on March second of two thousand eleven, we issued over thirteen million dollars of tax allocation bonds for various projects within the area. Two success stories that we're all aware of is the, um, Galt Senior Place, which had its first tenant moved in in March of two thousand eleven. We also did the rehabilitation of the historic Oddfellows Building, which, um, is now known as Brewster's Bar and Grill, and that they celebrated their grand opening in May of two thousand eleven. Public Safety Measure R, which was approved by the voters. I'm proud to report that as of the end of the audit of fiscal year, we had five sworn officers, one of them is grant funded through the COPS program, and one dispatcher that are included in Fund Forty-Seven to Measure R. And I will be presenting to the Measure R Oversight Committee more information on the revenues and the expenditures, and that meeting is scheduled tomorrow evening. We also follow up with some economic factors generally in the governmental activities. Revenues did decrease. Um, we went, um, they were decreased by approximately four million dollars primarily related to amounts on, that were reimbursed related to the Central Galt Interchange Project, um, but we also did see some decreases due to the lack of new development, decreases in assessed value, um, and lower rates of return on our investments. Um, there was one positive on the, we had a major increase in charges for services, and that was a result of one building permit that was issued, and that was the Galt Place, Galt Senior Place. Um, as far as the expenditures in total for governmental activity, we saw a decrease in expenditures. We went down from twenty-three point seven million dollars, um, to twenty-three point three million dollars and primarily related to street projects. We had a lot of street activity, but there was an actual decrease from, in comparison to the prior year. The next part of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is the financial section, and I did present a pre-audit, um, report back in October, and I'm pleased to report that there were no significant changes from that date to now in the financial statements, but I did wanna just give an overview on the general fund. Some information where our revenues received, um, were seven point three million dollars compared to the revised budget of seven point six million dollars, which was consistent to the prior year as well, seven point six million dollars in revenues. On the expenditure side, within the general fund, we, um, budgeted, uh, eleven point five million dollars, and we actually expended ten point six. Some of the savings were related to the community development block grants that were not expended, and the regional law enforcement training center as well. There were savings throughout, most of the other departments related to salary savings, um, that were incurred. We had some, the furloughs, again, we had eleven furloughs from the period of August two thousand ten, which ended in May of two thousand eleven, and there were savings across the board throughout maintenance and operations. Reserves were fully funded in the fiscal year that just ended, so I'm pleased to report that. Um, Culture and Recreation, just wanna hit, um, on that one just briefly. Revenues were up by thirty-six thousand dollars more than budget in the audit of fiscal year, so that was definitely good news. Um, and expenditures compared to budget, we had three point four million dollars of expenditures compared to the budget of three point five million dollars, primarily related to IT expenditures that did not happen in the fiscal year under administrative departments. In the enterprise funds, revenue increased from ten million dollars to ten point eight million dollars primarily related to the one permit, Galt Place. They had some impact fees, water and sewer related, which affects the enterprise funds, and we had some decreases in expenditures. We went from nine point two million dollars to eight point seven million dollars primarily in the sewer enterprise funds, a result of less amounts being expended on the bio-solids off-hauling. One of the items that you may have noticed was a change in our, in our fund balance reporting. Governmental Accounting Standards Board issued Statement Number fifty-four, and, um, basically has to do with Indian fund balance reports within, um, fund balances within the governmental funds. Our financial statements aren't compliant with GAFD fifty-four. I did advise council last year that they would be restructured, but I do wanna come back to council and just address GAFD fifty-four, because it does affect how we present our fund balances. Um, we have been familiar with presenting our reservations for economic uncertainty and capital, uh, equipment replacement. What that does now, it's no longer called reserves, it's now included within our unassigned fund balance. I wanna present a more comprehensive report just on GAFD fifty-four, and that will be at the same time that we present the single audit, so we're expecting that will be before March of two thousand twelve, so sometime in the near future, we'll be coming back and addressing that specific item. Um, after the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, there's also a statistical section that's really informational only, information only, and it presents ten years of historical information, and you can kinda see some trends going on with the city, so that's, it's useful information, um, and invaluable to us. Um, the second report is the Memorandum on Internal Controls and Required Communications. There were no material weaknesses noted, however, there was one that the auditors did bring to our attention that they thought could improve internal controls, and that was the use of receiving reports. One of the items that they noted during their sample testing was that if we had a shipment from Office Depot, say, for instance, that, um, we would sign the Office Depot slip as we received, but we didn't have to go through the process of ticking off, um, check marking that we received three hammers or, or something like that. So, they believe that, and I agree, that part of our due diligence is to ensure that we are only paying for those products that we receive, and so, um, a process has been distributed to all departments, and, um, so we feel that we are now addressing this weakness in our internal controls. There, um, in the prior year, we had two findings on PCI compliance and the fund balance reporting. We just talked about the fund balance change, and PCI compliance has been addressed, so there are no outstanding items for the prior fiscal year, they haven't addressed. And the final report deals with the agreed upon procedures on compliance of Proposition one eleven, that's our GAN limit, our calculation, and the calculation was done correctly, and there were no findings noted within that report. Um, there are no costs associated with acceptance of the Comprehensive Financial Report or the other two reports as presented herein, so with that, I would ask for council's acceptance of the reports. I am joined this evening by both accounting managers, Donna Krug and Michelle Neely, as well as Catherine Yuan, who is a partner with the independent firm of Maze and Associates. So, with that, if council has any questions of me or any other member of the, um, team, I, we'd be more than glad to try to address that this evening. So, that concludes my report.
Questions from the council? No questions. No questions. Wow.
Thank you.
I missed.
Excellent.
Good job, as always, right there to you and your staff. We appreciate the way you're looking out for our money.
Do we need to have a motion to accept this report?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, do I have a motion to that effect?
To accept.
Is there a second? We have a first and a second, so roll call vote, please.
Accept the report, Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously, and at some point, I think we wanna thank, uh, your staff for all the hard work.
Absolutely. Awesome. Michelle Dawn and all of the finance team, so I'm very lucky that they're on board now.
And I'm so glad that you're really not gonna make us look at all of that stuff at the office, but you were prepared, you were prepared just in case. God knows you know your stuff.
I'll have to bring you some more cookies.
Next item, please.
Next item, City of Galt Culture and Recreation Fund for the year ended June thirty two thousand eleven, financial statements.
There you go.
That's you.
Good evening.
Didn't think you'd get up like that easy, did you?
A break. Um, good evening. Um, this evening, staff is recommending that council accept.
This evening, staff is recommending that council accept the financial statements for the cultural recreation fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th as presented by the city clerk. In addition, staff is recommending that the city discontinue the standalone issuance of the financial statements for the cultural recreation fund and I will get into that just a little bit. The financial information, I've already gone over through the city's financial report. So, I do want to focus just on the standalone financial statement. It is staff's recommendation that we discontinue the standalone publication of the report and by doing that, we're not compromising the actual quality of the audit. Our auditors are very familiar with AB 3773 and back in 2000, council directed staff to do an add-on alternate to the current audit. What that was is just to ensure that we were utilizing market revenues for culture and recreation purposes only. The auditors are very familiar with that assembly bill. They actually do standalone testing of the revenues, the receipts and the expenditures. So, the quality of the work that will be performed, it's not going to be reduced, it's not being compromised. But what it does do is actually that $3,400 that's currently in the budget is really just to issue that report. That report, the fund is already included within the comprehensive annual financial report and it's our position that the information is already included in the audit and in these tough economic times, I believe that that $3,400 that's currently in the budget could be used for other purposes. But, so this evening, that is staff's recommendation and again, if council has any questions, I'd be more than glad to address that. The impact is basically if council accepts staff's recommendation is that the audited numbers will go into our financials, but there would be a savings in Fund 6, Administration Professional Services in the amount of $3,400. So, with that, I can answer any questions or our auditors here as well.
Questions or discussions on any of this?
Yeah, I don't think we need to double anything. I mean, if something's already there, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. So, I'm glad that you guys notice those things and it's always good to save money.
Would you read the recommended action on this one because I think there's two parts to it?
Yes, the action would be to accept the City of Galt Culture and Recreation Fund for the year ended June 30, 2011 financial statements and authorize the discontinuation of subsequent Culture and Recreation Fund financial statement reports effective with the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2012.
That's the recommended. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
My name is Payne. Her name is Powers.
Okay, let's start over. Let's start over. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed unanimously. Thank you. And with a twinkle. Next item.
You know, I should interrupt because council and staff got Vice Mayor Powers looking for her birthday, which was last Friday. It's at our seat with a big red bow on it. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item. Under Public Works Department Railroad Quiet Zone Study.
I'm here to introduce Justin Fox who is with Wilbur Smith and who will be presenting the quiet zone information to you. Thank you.
It looks like a few minutes.
Take just a minute.
There you go. We've been here before. Man on standby?
There you go. It was up to, what's on your screen? Why?
She pushed a button and got rid of it. She was here early to make sure that didn't happen. Yeah. Somewhere three, somewhere one. Not going to be told in public. There's a difference between the audience too hard to listen to. Hey, look at there.
Computer locked.
Oops. I think it's Murphy's Law tonight. Exactly.
There you go. Thank you so much for inviting me. I hope I'm not too many people's way to see this. Yeah, but you've got, yeah, exactly. I just wanted to preface the remarks with a short story. The study began on May 10th of this year and if anybody knows the significance of the day, that was when the golden spike was driven and the Transcontinental Railroad was completed. So, coming out to Galt on such an auspicious day for railroad quiet zone study, I knew it was going to be a good effort. So, with that, we began the effort and the purpose of tonight's presentation is just to go briefly through the process and the conclusions and to answer any questions you may have. A quiet zone in brief is one or more crossings at which a locomotive operator or an engineer does not have to by rule sound the train horn while approaching or passing through the crossing or multiple crossings of a quiet zone. By federal law, that's what he or she has to do today. Within 20 seconds of actually crossing or getting to a crossing, the locomotive operator has to be sounding his horn. With this, with this federal regulation, the establishment of a quiet zone, he doesn't automatically have to do it. He retains the ability, of course, to do it in situations where it's merited. For example, if someone's on the crossing and he feels that, or she feels that sounding the horn will motivate that person to get out of the way, that he can blow his horn. So, there is still horn blowing with quiet zones. But generally speaking, once quiet zones are established, horn blowing in the zone goes way down. And this is very popular. It's taking off around the country. The Federal Railroad Administration, which is the federal agency that oversees the process, establishes the process, participates in the process, keeps, it makes itself very available to help to go through the process and made, generally speaking, made the effort fairly easy for cities to qualify for quiet zones. There are 18 quiet zones that have been established so far in the state of California. This is the study area we looked at. We were asked to look at seven crossings. Five of them are in, are in the city of Galt and two of them are just outside of the city of Galt. Those two are Twin Cities Road and Spring Street. But from Elm Avenue down to Cost Road, those are of course all city, well, within the city of Galt. And the train line that you see running there is the former SP, now UP Fresno subdivision. It's the main line that links the Pacific Northwest with Los Angeles. So, it's a, it's a fairly busy main line. Part of the process is to contact the Union Pacific and that's what we did. We received representative train volume information and that's catalogued in this particular table, which are all elements that go into the calculation of whether or not you can qualify for quiet zones. It's very good input to have. Generally speaking, representative volume for the Fresno subdivision is 20 freight trains a day. There are also shorter, slower switching trains that occupy the track that serve the, that come through the city of Galt and actually some of them work the Ione Branch. It takes off from the Fresno subdivision. In addition to these, there are four fast passenger trains, the San Joaques that go through Galt every day. Another input to the quiet zone, of course, is the accident history and it really focuses on the last five years, but we went back to the FRA database and tried to get a sense of how many accidents and what kind of accidents occurred in Galt at the severing crossings. We also catalogued in this particular slide, the average daily traffic at each of the crossings, which is another input to the quiet zone calculation. Quiet zones have a lot of acronyms in them and it's troubling, it's disturbing, you just got, people just need to get their arms around them, but they're absolutely important. They're, the meaning of them, I'll explain very quickly. The NSRT, the National Significant Risk Threshold, this is calculated on a nationwide basis and this is the risk to the motoring public of going through crossings that have gates and trains, where trains blow their horns. So, that's calculated on a nationwide basis. The Quiet Zone Risk Index, the QZRI, that's very, very specific to a quiet zone and for example, that's what the number that we looked at and compared with the National Significant Risk Threshold which is calculated on a nationwide basis to determine whether or not our quiet zone can beat, you know, can beat that number. The Risk Index with Horns, that's another output from the quiet zone calculation. That's also very, that's also specific to a quiet zone and that's the risk to a motorist of going, of going through the crossing when the horns, when the train, when the train, locomotive operators are blowing their horns. And lastly, the SSMs are the supplementary safety measures. These are, these are steps that can be taken to reduce the risk of accidents at crossing when train horns aren't being sounded. So, with that little quick alphabet soup, we can go through the next slide. This is the quiet zone process and actually to qualify, to begin the analysis, every crossing in a quiet zone has to have gates and flashing lights. That's a, that's a bottom line requirement. But then you, then you have to, but if that's so, then you have to run the, what's called the FRA Quiet Zone Calculator and that, and that has the input for the quiet zones. That's the Quiet Zone Risk Index. That's the score that you get to see if your quiet zone beats the National Significant Risk Threshold. And if it does, you're safer than the average crossing in the United States, so you're qualified. But if no, you have to add, you have to do two things. One, either add SSMs to all crossings in the quiet zones or add SSMs in such a number that the Risk Index with Horns goes, drops below either the Risk, the Quiet Zone Risk Index drops with, lower than either the Risk Index with Horns or the Nationwide Significant Risk Threshold. So, that's the process. I know it's confusing, but that's, that's what you have to follow when you're trying to figure out what combinations of SSMs do you need in order to have a quiet zone established in the community. And here, here's an example of what you can do to lower the risk at a crossing. One, grade separations, that of course takes a crossing out of, out of, out of play completely. So, that's probably the safest you can do. Street closures is in the same ballpark. No traffic is going to go across the crossing anymore, therefore they're not at risk. You can add, you can add medians or delineators on either side on the approaches to the crossing to make it difficult for, for someone to go around the gate and into the opposing lane and try to cross, try to beat the train across the, try to beat the train across the crossing before, you know, before he gets hit. And lastly, four, the last two are four quadrant gates which are, which is a gate on each corner of the crossing. And two quad, the last one is two quadrant gates where you, on a one-way street. And so, what we did in the analysis is we, we looked at all the crossings in the quiet zones and used these gauges as a filter to see whether or not they were appropriate or not and to come up with SSM solutions to qualify for a quiet zone. Lastly, one other system that's, that's actually very interesting and is gaining popularity around the country, but it's, it's not actually an SSM, but it's a one-for-one replacement. So, it's called the Wayside Horn System. And if you install one of these, which senses the train approaching, it will blast the horn down the approach to the, to the crossing. The benefit of that is instead of broadcasting largely to the community, you can focus it very, you can focus it along the approaches. It's, it's really best in rural areas because if you do it in a, in a residential area, the poor people on that street are not going to be happy at all. We did use one of these solutions to look at a, and to, on Twin Cities Road as a possible, possible implementation and for, for a quiet zone. In all, we looked at 14 different concepts, really playing with the SSMs and what you can do. What we did notice that certainly the existing conditions forbid the establishment of a quiet zone without any improvements at all. We ran the Quiet Zone Calculator and found the Quiet Zone Risk Index way above the Risk Index with Horns. So, that told us that you had to do something in order to lower the risk. It just became a matter of what SSMs do you use? How many of them do you use? And how, and even how many crossings do you consider for the quiet zone? We, I, I ended up with three to show tonight because I really feel that these really bracket the possibilities. Concept one looked at all crossings in the quiet zone, both those, the two that are in the county and, and the five that are in the city and we applied SSMs to all of them. That, that involves four quadrant gate solutions were the only practical SSMs at four particular crossings. That of course, if you, if you put SSMs at all the crossings, you are automatically qualified for quiet zone. So, that would be easy except for the fact that to do that would cost about $4 million. So, we figured, let's, what else can we do? So, so we looked at another situation where we put SSMs at four crossings. Basically, those are medians on the approaches. No four quadrant gates and we include wayside horns at one crossing, which is Twin Cities Road. And no SSMs at two crossings. We ran the calculator again and, and it did turn out that the, that the Quiet Zone Risk Index was lower than the Risk Index with Horns, so it would qualify. Lastly, we said, let's just focus on the city crossings just within Galt by themselves with SSMs at three crossings, which is Cost Road, F and C Street and no SSMs at Elm Avenue and A Street. And that also qualified for a quiet zone. The good news about that is, is the price was the lowest. So, I was, I was gratified that we could, we could find that particular solution. And here are the costs that we, for the three solutions that we identified. What I, what I wanted to just point out here is besides the capital costs, there, there will be some ongoing maintenance cost. You know, medians get damaged even though they're made out of concrete. Things can happen. Gates can be hit by a who knows what and can go out of service. There, there are things that, that just happen and I think a typical, I, for this particular episode, particular study, I contacted 10 different cities to try to figure out what did they budget? And a typical amount, a representative amount that they include in their maintenance budget for quiet zone maintenance is around $5,000.
Hey, Neil.
Pardon?
We've got $5,000 annually?
Annually, per year, yes. These series of slides just simply show the SSMs that are envisioned for each crossing. And I'm just going to focus on the SSMs which are the, the big items that you'll see. Those are, on Cost Road on the east side, you have a 60-foot median and you have 100-foot median on the, on the west side. 100-foot medians at F Street on either side of the crossing. And C Street, the SSM that were, were like the other two, which are medians on, on both of the approaches, both 100-foot long. Now, A Street and, and C, and E, and Elm Avenue were streets where we, for the purpose of the calculation, we didn't assume any SSMs. And indeed, the, the Quiet Zone Risk Index was lower than the Risk Index with, with the Risk Index with Horns, so it does qualify. But even though it qualified, the CPUC commented that they would like to see medians. And so, we have a, we did assume, and because they have, you have to get approval from them for any, for any modification of crossing, de facto, this is a requirement. If the CPUC is telling you, suggesting that you put something, medians on either side, you should probably you should probably go ahead and do that. And that's what we did here. Again, the, the, the minimum length for a median for, for a quiet, for an SSM is 60 feet. We were stuck with 30 feet on the west side of A Street, but we could get away with a 60-foot median on the east side of A Street crossing. And the same arrangement, basic arrangement would ha, would, would happen at Elm Avenue, except you could extend on the east side the median 100 feet. This slide is interesting, because as I went through the process, I, I was wondering if, if we, if we just have the city, if we have the quiet zone just at the city crossings, once a train passes through and blows its horn as it approaches Spring Street, will it be terribly destructive to the community? Well, this is a sound contour of a train blowing its horn going northbound. The, this, and, and measured color coding indicates 70 decibels, 80 decibels, 90 decibels, and 100 decibels. In the immediate vicinity where this horn is blowing, it is more of a rural land use, so, so it, it is a basic good news story. But this does not mean that someone on the east side or on the south, toward the south, won't hear the horns. They just won't hear the horns. That they, imagine this contour occurring at downtown Gulf. That's, that's basically what, what you're avoiding. It, it'll be well to the north of downtown Gulf. On the basis of the analysis, Concept Three was recommended. It was sur, surely the lowest cost of, of the various cons, of all the 14 that we looked at, but it's also easiest to implement, in that, you know, you only really have ones you're, you really are dealing with the city. You don't have to pull in, if you were, if you're do, if you're doing this outside with the, with Twin Cities Road and, and Spring Street, you'd have to bring the County of Sacramento involved, and that's a, that's just one extra agency you have to, you have to deal with. So, you know, I'm always go for the easiest. It's, you know, it seems to be the best way to implement a quiet zone on, on a, on a timely basis. So that combined with the low cost led to the conclusion that a recommendation should be Concept Three. One of the, one of the tasks that we went through is to count pedestrians at the crossings in downtown, even though pedestrians counts per se are, are not, are not an input, direct input to the quiet zone analysis. The city expressed a desire to know that, to gather that information, so we went out to A Street, C and F Street, and counted the people that were crossing the street. One thing we noticed was that there was a fair, not uncommonly, it occurred multiple times in the two hours we were out there in mid-September, that people crossed between, crossed mid-block between A and C Streets, even people, even, you know, men and women with babies. And surely, if you have a quiet zone, this is not gonna get any safer. So what we thought would be a good solution for that, certainly not required by a quiet zone or CPUC, is a pedestrian fence might be a good idea to be considered along there. Certainly, that fence is, is part of the Central Gulf Rehabilitation Project. That's part of it. But if that never gets built, that fence there will deter mid-block crossings. Step, to implement a quiet zone, about a year-long timeline is, is required. This is a finding from my survey of the various cities. And what I'll allow, outline here, and I won't go through it all, but it's, it's basically the process that you have to go through to establish the quiet zone. The UP will, really has to be part of the process, the CPUC and the FRA. And, and I've worked with them in the past, and, and they're good people, and they, they'll be very helpful in working through the details of implementing a quiet zone. And that's my experience. Lastly, I mentioned this before, just because your, a quiet zone has been established does not mean train noise will go away. For safety reasons, the locomotive operator, the engineer can blow his horn if someone gets stuck on the crossing or, you know, just is not paying attention or whatever. If the operator feels that that blowing the horn will cure the situation, he will blow the horn. When a train starts, for example, you have, the, the traffic that goes out the Ione Industrial Lead starts and stops, every time it starts again, according to operating rules of the, the Union Pacific Railroad, it must blow its horn. And, and lastly, the, as the trains go, we, we just looked at the, the crossings on the Fresno subdivision. We did not analyze the crossings that are part of the Ione Industrial Lead. And certainly, the trains that go up that lead, since there's no quiet zone, will continue to blow their horns. So that, that, that is basically the finding of our study. If you have any questions, I'd, I'd like to answer them.
Council, questions?
Real quick question.
Okay, we'll start with you, Councilman Cruz.
Sure. On your documentation, I believe it's on page eight of your report, section two, where did you get the information as far as the number of injured and killed as far as pedestrians?
That information comes from the FRA Accident Database, which is available right from the FRA. It's an online database. And so you can actually go look at their accident database and, and pull up the actual accident reports that are filed for each one of these.
The only reason I ask is because I'm looking at this, and I can tell you for a fact that the Cost Road accidents, as far as pedestrians, is flawed.
Oh, okay. Well, then, I'd like to-
One fatality for us on Cost Road within the last 10 years.
All right.
Driving trains. Just informational.
Okay, fantastic. I'll, I'll note that to the FRA.
Is that it? Councilman Cruz?
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Singleton, I think you had-
Yeah, I have some questions.
A quick, quick question. I'm looking at your concepts, Concepts One, Two, and Three. And of course, one's most expensive, and then we have the least expensive. Do you have a percentage of safety factor difference between, say, Concept One as opposed to Concept Two? Concept Two to Concept Three? There's gotta be some kind of risk factor that, as it gets larger, I would assume, I don't wanna assume too much as, as we get to the least expensive cost of, of-
Right. That number is called a Quiet Zone Risk Index, and that was calc, that gets calculated for every, for every crossing, or every quiet zone concept. And that is in the report. The numbers are there.
You know the numbers, 'cause I didn't, I didn't, I didn't locate them.
Oh, okay.
I was just curious if you, if you had those.
Yeah, we do.
And does that also increase the, as the risk factor goes up, does that increase the injury or possible death for those areas?
Uh, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Could you repeat the question?
I was just saying, as it, as the increase goes up risk-wise, does it also, does it go up as far as injuries or deaths in those areas?
Uh, the FRA is of the opinion that if you, if you establish a quiet zone and you, you beat whatever number you, you, you're, you're measuring against, either National, Nationwide Significant Risk Threshold or the Risk Index with Horns, that is a very safe crossing. So all of these are very safe. Concept One, we didn't run the calculator, because we didn't have to. Concept One has SSMs at every crossing, so it automatically qualifies. On page, on page 32 and 33, we have charts that show what the Quiet Zone Risk Index is for Concept Two and Concept Three, compared to the Risk Index with Horns.
Which one now?
Okay. Okay, for the, for Concept Two, which is the seven crossings, their, their Quiet Zone Risk Index was 8,000, or 18,655.46. And it, and that beats the Quiet Zone, or the Risk Index with Horns, which is in the 25,000 area. The Concept Three is almost identical to Quiet Zone Two, in terms of its Quiet Zone Risk Index. It's 18,930, and that beats the Risk Index with Horns at 20,385.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you. Sorry to make it, look around for stuff, but I didn't have time to find it. I, I was looking for it.
That's why I'm here.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Shelton, did you have any questions?
I had a couple of questions, but I was wondering if we had any speaker sheets or anyone from the public.
You want what, clackers?
I would like to hear those first, before I make my comments.
Okay. And then come back to the council.
Oh, that was my recommendation.
Okay. Is that how you do it?
I would like to hear from the public if there was two or three, or one or two, or whatever.
Okay. Mike Fudge.
I saw him moving in his chair, that's why I was-
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. First of all, I want to thank you for, first of all, expending the money it took in order to have this engineering firm do the study. That was an expenditure right up front, without really knowing what you were gonna get. So I thank you for taking that risk. I think that the report that they're presenting here paints a, a pretty good picture for the City of Gulf. Mayor, you know, you did some research your own, and you know that the expenditure for Elk Grove was a couple of million dollars. And I think that several things need to be noted about this particular study. First of all, I think limiting it to the city only is extremely wise, because anytime you get intergovernmental cooperation involved, it usually is difficult. But more than that, Concept Three is one of the most cost-effective things that I've seen. I've looked at several cost analysis on different quiet zones, and this one comes in very cost-effective. However, they are recommending something that I think is very important, and I'm not sure what slide it's on, but there's a slide that shows the additional cost for two streets and for the fence. And I don't remember where that one is right at the moment. But I think that to do the quiet zone, Concept Three, and not do those intersections, and especially not doing the fence, would be very foolhardy. I have a saying, it sounds cold-hearted sometimes, but you can't fix stupid. Okay? And somebody is gonna try to walk across that intersection and possibly trip, get their foot caught or something like that, and end up getting killed. And the whole purpose of the quiet zone is not to take the safety away from, from the community, but to give the community an improved quality of life. And this will make a huge difference for the community, especially the poor folks that live over there, right off those railroad crossings. They're going to wonder if they're still alive after that's implemented. So anyway, I, I recommend that the City Council approve the expenditure for Concept Three. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Gaethel?
Hi, Fred Gaethel, I live in the city. Couple of things. Right off the bat, I've been around rail a long time. I'm a member of the National Fire Protection Association, their Rail Safety Subsection. I'm currently involved in a project on, on the web that's trying to document the history of rail in the United States. I went through this study, and, first of all, let me address this slide. I don't, I don't know where this came from, whether that's a generic horn, or whether they measured it, but I live 1.8 miles to the east and a little bit south of that crossing, the Twin Cities Road. So I live out here, and in the summertime, if I have the windows open, it sounds like the train's a block away on a cool night. So I'm not sure that those noise standards are, or those studies are accurate, without doing actual noise studies at various times of the year. It depends on atmospheric conditions. I can hear trains and understand, I don't care, 'cause I don't, I, I like horns, and I like trains, so I listen to it. I, I enjoy it. But I can hear the wheels hitting, the, the cracks in the track. I can hear engines throttling up. Horns, I can hear them from, on a southbound train, I can hear them from Twin Cities down to A Street. And northbound, I start picking them up at Elm Street and can hear them all the way through. If you don't do Spring Street and Twin Cities Road, you've effectively wiped out the benefit for the northeast. Some of the people that have complained about the noise, I know, live in the area I live in. And if, if you go with option three, you're, you're just, the whole northeast is still gonna get noise, and they're gonna get a lot of it. I don't, I don't think the cost difference is that great. I understand it's the county, I understand you have to deal with the county, but I think you're, you're shortchanging the people in the northeast that are unhappy with this. Also, on the fencing, they said they spent two hours looking. I spend a lot of time down there, because I am documenting the rail history, and I take a lot of photos. People, it's not just between A and C, it's all the way from F to A that people cross. Kids cross in the morning. If you're gonna fence it, you need to fence it in both sections, because people cross, they cut across, they, the kids coming from school.
Mr. Gaethel, your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Do you have another speaker sheet?
I do not have one.
I can, let me address just a couple of those comments while the next speaker's coming up. The first one is the Central Gulf Corridor Project does show a fence from F all the way to A Street, so that was the, one of the concerns, so it does address that. And then the other one is, I think is, I think it's reflected in the report, but we can always add Spring Street and Twin Cities later. I think the recommendation was to move forward with the easier ones first, get those done, we can do them relatively quickly, and then we can see what the noise impact is, and then if the council, we can try to secure additional funding later, if the council wants to come back later and try to do those other two, that's, that's an option as well.
Okay. Mr. Baldwin, I think you wanted to comment.
Real quick, I was trying this years ago, too, and I'm glad to see that someone else took up the gauntlet, and it was going. It's Al Baldwin in Gulf here. And the, the question I have is the, is the fencing, is it on both sides of the tracks? Okay? And it would be chain link, you're suggesting. Is that correct? Okay, I know we have the noise, but, and I know it would cost more, but would it do anything if you put cinder block on both sides of it, concentrating the noise through? There's a reason for it, 'cause we used to live on the east side, too, in a dear way. And Fred's exactly right. You could hear that clickety-clackin' in the trains over there, and you could also hear the freeway, though, too, on certain nights. So it's the way the wind's blowing, apparently, that gives you this noise. But the train tracks alone make a lot of noise. Now, railroads tried to soften this out, they've tried new wheels, they've tried putting different kinda tracks, I believe, in there to make this, it's a new thing that they've tried. And it did help a little bit, but there is a lot of noise coming from that. The chain link fence can be broken into, they can be cut, and they can get, make holes in. The cinder block would be great. Both sides, though, if you only have it on one side, I'm, I'm gonna- Both sides, though, if you only have it on one side, I'm, I'm going to, this has been proven, if you have it on this side, and Old Town is east of it, the noise from the tracks and the horn through the chain link fakes would go either way. It would just, it wouldn't do anything with the fence, the noise is still there. The cinder block on one side would help out, because of Old Town and all the businesses you want to put in there, because it would definitely tone it down on the tracks. But if you put it on both sides, it would help the west side, that sound will hit that block and bounce off, and it would be huge on the west side, if it was cinder block. If it's a chain link fence, it's just going to go through, and people can cut through them, they can dig under them, they're still going to go through there. You're going to have a lot of activity over there, you'll never know where the hole is. You can see it in parks now, the fences are bent, and there's holes in them. So something to consider, maybe other than a chain link fence, even if you put sticks in it, it might help. But if, if that's the only thing you got, the chain link fence, that's for safety, and noises are a main concern too, not just safety, and that's why we're here tonight. Anyway, just another thought in the process of questioning and going through it and brainstorming. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman, or do you have any other?
I do not have any other.
Uh, Councilman Shelton, now, did you want to make your comments, or ask your question?
Sure, thank you, thank you. I have the study, for the study, do you remember what it, what we allocated? I can't remember what, which that?
Seventy-five.
Was it seventy-five?
After the study.
Sixty thousand, okay. When we talked about, you had mentioned about the staff cost, was that for all of the crossings, or was that like five thousand per crossing for annual maintenance? I'm just trying to.
It, it's a typical amount that, that I discovered, developed by talking to other cities of, you know, Riverside, for example, will have seventeen crossings, and Sacramento and other numbers, so, you know, I was trying to come up with a concept, a representative number, that what you'd have to, what, what you should budget, I would recommend budgeting for the Quiet Zone for operations and maintenance costs. So it would be for the zone, on an annual basis.
Okay, for the entire zone, okay, that's what I, yeah, okay. Then on the annual cost, you have that, where, do you know if there was going to be any other cost that, I mean, you haven't shared with us, I mean, the fence came up?
There, there will be, every three, three and a half years, you have to, you have to file paperwork with the FRAs, proving that your Quiet Zone is still in compliance. Based on my research, that takes about a day, or maybe a day and a half of a, or two days of a city staffer's time to file that paperwork.
Is there a cost attributed to that?
Uh, whatever, yeah, I, I suppose maybe.
I don't know if there was a fee for filing that.
A thousand dollars or so, or, every three years.
Okay. And then, I guess the question is for Jason now, we had so much money that was in the Community Development Grant, the block grant, and I guess there's a minus in there too, two hundred and twenty, and about Sec, could you just explain that a little bit? Sec City, I'm sorry, Sacramento County?
Fifty thousand.
What page are you, are you looking at a particular page that we can follow?
No, these are my notes, sorry.
Yeah, we originally budgeted to receive two hundred thousand dollars in Community Development Block Grant funds.
Okay.
In this year, we received a notification from Sacramento County about a month ago that that allocation was going to be reduced to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the recommendation tonight is to reduce the revenue estimate, as well as the appropriation. We were anticipating the two hundred, now it's a one fifty. With that, there's still sufficient funding to do the design work for the project, and, and then we would, we would have to come back at a later date to either allocate additional CDBG funds, potentially from next year's allocation, and/or redevelopment funds, when those fundings, when that funding becomes available again.
Because we're talking around three hundred thousand total. I mean, the numbers are two eighty-eight, two, three forty-five. Okay? And then, if it gets approved tonight, and we go to bid, you might know, one of you, from, when we have this many crossings that we're working on, do you have a timeframe of, like, say they started, like, tomorrow, you know, before they would be done with those, with the project?
There, it's a process where you have to involve a number of people.
Multiple agents.
Right, but you can, you can get started tomorrow. If you got started tomorrow, and, and you, you were very deliberate about this process, and kept at it, and, you know, were not deterred, or.
Sure.
Lost heart, and forged ahead, a one-year timeline is what I predict it would take. But there's, you have to bring in a lot of people to the process, the FRA, the CPUC are, are the primary ones, the UP, of course. And then, then of course, it's, the, the UP is, and the, in addition to the UP, the other railroads that operate on the track through town is, of course, Amtrak, which runs the San Joaquin's and BNSF. And as part of the process, you have to incorporate, you have to share with them your plans for the Quiet Zones, and get their comments, and respond to the comments, and so there's an iterative process here, back and forth, sharing designs, working with the CPUC, making sure that they're happy, because they ultimately have to sign off on any modification you do to the crossing. But a, a year is about, you know, sustained effort, I would say, a year you do it.
Plus four, right?
It's plus.
Four months. Okay, thank you.
Do you have further questions?
That's all what I have right at this moment.
Okay. Vice Mayor, question. Um, I wanted to, I'm trying to remember, on Elm Street, the only Union Pacific track is the one that runs along McFarland, is that correct?
Yes.
Because if you continue on Elm, I think you'd become, what, Amador?
I know.
There's another train track that.
You saw it, right? You can put your, go back to the one where you did A Street or Elm. Yeah, what you see, this is, I believe, what you're talking about.
The Ions here.
This is the Ions.
Okay.
And this is, this is the main, the northside.
And that one doesn't get much activity at all.
From what I can tell, there's a few trains leaving, and usually from the daytime.
Okay. Um, and then the other question, I'd like you to kind of describe for A and C Streets, what is going to keep pedestrians from crossing at those crossings?
Mid-block locations?
Yeah, no, not mid-block, because both A Street and C Street are heavily trafficked with children, and, as well as moms pushing their strollers and things. So when this is in effect, what keeps the pedestrians from continuing? Can you describe what we'd be looking at?
At one time, what I had noticed, that cities were putting in pedestrian gates, in addition to crossing gates, that came down. I don't see that much anymore. I, I don't know exactly the reason for that not being recommended, but, but it, that was, that seemed to me a safety device that made a lot of sense. In my opinion, what I, I see, what I, with the Quiet Zone, there will be no particular treatments called for, for pedestrians at A or C Street, in, beyond, beyond what is out there today. I know that there's been a substantial effort to upgrade the sidewalks and the, and the pedestrian facilities at those crossings, but beyond that, nothing in particular is envisioned in the recommendation for, for any of the three concepts.
But there's still, I mean, when a train comes through, the lights are flashing, bells are ringing, the arms go down.
Just the train's not whiffling, right? That's the only difference.
The locomotive, the locomotive operator still retains, of course, the ability to blow his horn if he senses, if he sees an unsafe condition. And so, so you can count on him blowing that horn. But as you said, as you pointed out, the, the gates will be coming down, the bells will be ringing, those, those are traditional safety devices for preventing people from crossing when a train is approaching.
In other words, it'll be exactly like what we have now, other than there won't be the train blowing its whistle.
That's right.
Okay. Um, anybody else have any further questions? If not, let's decide what we want to do here. Do you want to read the recommended action, City Clerk?
Okay, to receive the report, completed by Wilbur Smith and Associates, and direct staff to issue a request for proposal to advance the Quiet Zone Concept Number Three, and approve a budget appropriation adjustment, reducing Community Development Block Grant funding for fiscal year 2011-12 from two hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Can we take these in one vote, or do we need to do each one separate?
You can do a combined vote.
Okay. Okay, Council, you've heard the recommended action?
I can emotionally accept the recommended, recommended action.
Accept.
We have a first and a second, roll call vote please.
Comment, please.
Okay.
I have a difference of opinion. The whistles are for a reason. I do agree that the engineers seem to be blowing the horns a little more than they should at times, although I'm not at the crossing. As a person that is, his whole life centers around safety, I look at, I did reluctantly agree with the study, now that we have the study, and I agree with some of the comments. If we do not have the funding to do the Quiet Zone for the whole community, then I have a real issue and concern. It sounds like that we have part of the funding, but it's going to roll over possibly to the next fiscal year. There's a lot of ifs of getting money. So overall, with safety, I cannot support this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did you want to comment, City Manager, on the funding that Councilman Shelton was referring to?
Well, we have, for the estimated cost of three hundred and forty-four, what is it, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, we have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars that is appropriated, available to spend on the project, which means we're, we're short about a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Staff's recommendation that the funding could come from two possible sources. One is future CDBG allocation, typically we get between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars annually. And then the other option is for redevelopment funding, and we'd likely to have that, that funding source unfrozen come January of 2012.
Any other comments?
Thank you for answering that, but.
Any other comments? Then I'll call for the votes.
Okay. It's Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
The vote is four to one in passing. Okay, thank you very much for that report. It's exciting. We have no communication, so we will now adjourn to the redevelopment agency. Roll call, please.
Board members, Powers?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Public comments?
I have no speaker sheets.
First item. Consent calendar.
Consent calendar, we have three items on the consent calendar. The first one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of November fifteen, 2011. Number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. And number three, approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending October, 2011.
Is there any questions or comments on the consent calendar?
No.
If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move to accept.
We have a first and a second, roll call vote please.
Board members, Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Motion's passed unanimously. Next item.
Next item, Finance Department, redevelopment agency of the City of Galt Component Unit Basic Financial Statements for the year ended June thirty, 2011.
Good evening again, and this evening, staff was recommending that the board accept the agency financial statements for the fiscal year ended, as read by the city clerk. The financial information is also included within the city's comprehensive annual financial report, so I won't go over that information right now, but I do want to bring a couple of items to the board's attention. One of them is within the notes, where long-term debt has increased as compared to the prior fiscal year, and the internal debt was restructured back in May of 2011. That's where we went back and looked at all of our debt, and said we needed to make some changes to the interest that was being accrued on, on that principal debt. So we made that adjustment, in addition to that, as reported earlier, in March, we issued thirteen point seven twenty-five million, thirteen million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in tax allocation bonds. So the total debt of the redevelopment agency at this point is nineteen million dollars. Again, again, in order to receive tax increment, though, whenever we get that money, it's based on debt of the redevelopment agency, so we have to report those, that information, and so the trigger to receive tax increment is to have debt. One of the budgetary highlights is that, I know, that that's, that's what the statement of indebtedness reports the debt. One of the items that I did want to bring to your attention was the payment that we made to the supplemental educational revenue augmentation fund, the CRAF came in, and that's where the state basically is taking our redevelopment tax increment. We paid over a million dollars in the prior year, and in the current audit year, we paid two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, as the board is aware. The state, again, tried to balance their budget with redevelopment funds, and they approved two action items, AB twenty-six and twenty-seven, basically just to spend dollars of redevelopment agency as we knew it. The California Redevelopment Agency, Redevelopment Agency Association, CRA, that wasn't right, though, California Redevelopment Association. And the League of California Cities filed suit challenging the constitutionality of what the state was doing, and the Supreme Court has agreed to hear the case, and we do expect that that decision will be made before January fifteenth. And one of the items that we did have to actually prepare was the enforceable obligation payment schedule. And basically, what that schedule said was, if the redevelopment agency ceased to exist under the redevelopment agency of the City of Galt, what are your obligations? So we did compile this list, and we posted it on our website, or council approved that, the board approved that on September sixth of the, of the current fiscal year. There were three findings related to the redevelopment agency. The first finding dealt with Health and Safety Code Section three, four, one, six, nine, which basically says that we are required to adopt that enforceable obligation payment schedule. The agency actually did adopt that schedule, and it was on September sixth. However, one of the findings was that, not, in addition to transmitting that schedule to the Department of Finance and the State Controllers Office, that we also had a responsibility to share that information with the Sacramento County, and post it on our website. Most of those items have been accomplished since then, and the information was transmitted to the Audit Controller on October twenty-fifth, and was posted on our website on November first, and we are complaints now, but that is one finding that was noted by the independent auditors. Additionally, the second finding that was noted was pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section three, three, six, oh, six, the agency is required, that within its annual budget, to report on specific information. Those two items that we should be reporting on is the work program for the coming year, including some goals. In addition to that, we look at what our accomplishments have been for the prior fiscal year. Most of that information has been included within the implementation plan. We have now made a point to include that in upcoming budgets, so that is something that we've already put on our file, and the Community Development Department and Finance will work together to incorporate that in the budgetary documents that will be presented in the future. The third item was an error in excess of surplus calculation here, according to Health and Safety Code Section three, 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 four, point, one, two, basically states on how we calculate the excess surplus. One of the calculations that we performed was that we did not include three million dollars of the amount in our deferred loans as an encumbrance of fund balance. The auditors caught that, and again, we want to try to, well, we want to ensure that we are encumbering as much money as we can to ensure that the state does not believe it's available for their use, so it wasn't, it wasn't oversight on our part. We have amended our fund balance, we have included those deferred loans, we subsequently reported that information to the State Controllers Office, and we did get confirmation that they did receive the updated information, so that item has also been addressed. So with that, if there are any questions that the board may have of staff, again, I am still joined. am still joined by both the county managers and the partner for Mays and Associates, so if you have any questions for either of us, then we would be glad to try to address that this evening, so thank you.
Council questions for our finance director? Councilman Cruz, did you-
No, I was just going to comment on your previous comment on the, the state, whether they want to or not, they're going to try to take it. They've proven that, the extortionists.
Okay, so if there are no questions or comments, would you read the actions that this receives, the report?
It's to accept the redevelopment agency of the City of Galt Component Unit Basic Financial Statements for the year ended June thirty, two thousand and eleven, and the report on compliance and on internal control over compliance based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards.
That is the recommended action, is there a motion to that effect?
A motion received then.
Councilman Singleton made the motion?
Second.
Councilman Shelton seconded it. Roll call, please, vote.
Board members Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Mayor, if I could just take just one more moment, I would just really like to publicly acknowledge the support efforts of the department, especially the county managers. I know that Michelle handles, acts as lead on the budget, and she puts in a lot of hours, and Donna actually takes lead with the audit, so I, I just think that even though I'm making the presentations this evening, it was just really because I wanted to give them a small break as a token of just appreciation of their work efforts, but really, the work efforts are really a team, and, and they definitely go above and beyond, so I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Look at that sick binder. Sounds like I'd want me a part of that.
Well, I think-
We were afraid she was going to read it to us.
Yeah. Liz, you have a good team.
Absolutely.
And the employee, you have to-
It's not a nice name. I think the whole council would join you in thanking the staff, and as we went through this pretty quickly, it doesn't indicate in the least how many hours that the staff put in on this for the council to get the information they need to try to keep our city in good condition and everything, so thank you both, all three of you. Did I hear a volunteer from Al Baldwin?
Yes.
Okay. So now we will adjourn the redevelopment and reconvene to the regular council meeting.
Next is the Galt Whitification Committee report to council, and they wanted to be here tonight, but were unable to attend. Just, they wrote up their own report, put it in the council packet. One of the items that I wanted to bring to council's attention is it references the year two thousand and ten, that's actually the year two thousand and eleven in their report. Just a few highlights, they highlighted seven homes this summer for their Home of the Month. They have four businesses currently participating in Adopt a Planner. One of the highlights of last year was their rose garden memorial planting at the post office, so if you go to the post office and see all the beautiful roses, that's from the Whitification Committee. So that's just a few of the highlights of what they did last year, and the report's in your packet.
Okay. So now, staff, do you have any further comments for the evening?
I should probably, no, I'll give a quick date.
Do you want to give the date?
Well, yeah, because we'll be, we're going to, this is a funny month to be closed.
It's a funny thing?
Sorry, I know. Our next, actually, our next big meeting is the city council meeting on December twentieth, but I wanted to bring to everybody's attention, we are closed on December twenty-third and December twenty-sixth for the holidays, and we also have furlough days, December twenty-ninth, twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth, which is Tuesday through Thursday.
And what, on the Friday, you're here but not here, is that the way it goes?
On that Friday, we're not here.
Okay.
That's, could be a nine-eighty day, I don't have a calendar in front of me. I think that's one of our nine-eighty days. On January second, we're off, which is a Monday, and the city will reopen on January third, which is a Tuesday, we do not have a council meeting on that Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay. Jason's checking my dates. Yes, twenty-third is the holiday for the Christmas Eve holiday.
Thank you. Okay, council members, comment, we'll start with Councilman Shelton down there at the end.
Sure, I missed the parade and the lighting of the tree, but I was doing the things in the community. I was involved and participated in the LaHeim to Life, a women's group that moved over to the Galt Place, and the mayor said she didn't see me there, but I was there several hours before, no. I think you came in about maybe thirty minutes after I left, so, and they appreciate-
Sure you were there.
No, I think if you ask some of the ladies there, they'll attest that I was there. There was all, that's all I have.
Okay, Councilman Cruz?
Oh, I think this Saturday was just, it was one of the best parades and events we've had in a long time as far as Christmas is concerned, and I'd like to say a special thank you to the members of Shop Local, the Parade Committee, and city staff, and a special thank you to Armando Solis. Without your help, sir, this thing couldn't have happened, and I wanted to say thank you very much.
And I think we want to thank you for being our elephant at the Littleton. Anyway, you did a good job. Councilman Singleton?
Well, it kind of stole some of my thunder, I'd like to, I wish some folks from Shop Local were here, want to know, let them know how, what's- I think you go to meetings in the morning, tell them, please, thank you, thank you so much, they did a wonderful job, and of course, the staff, I mean, I don't know what's going on with you guys here, it's like you guys can't do anything wrong, you know? Armando, you guys are, you guys are just, you kill me, man, you guys are great, everybody's done such a good job, and it's not because of the season, it's because they actually do a good job. These guys work hard every day, every day, and I see them out there, if you guys look around town, you can see them out there just walking away, so I appreciate everything you guys have done, and yeah, I'll bring you some more cookies.
I say it, I had a great time, too, had my own float, brought all the kids, we partyed like rock stars, it was a lot of fun, and I, I do have a few concerns, can I mention them now? And I've talked to Armando, maybe the parade route could be a little different next year, and to remember the people after the parade, I heard complaints of no hot chocolate, but other than that, it was awesome, it was a lot of fun, and the weather was good this year, we didn't get all wet and all rained on, and it was a nice night, a lot of fun.
Is that it? That's it? Okay. I just want to say, Saturday gave me a day to really appreciate the volunteers that we have in the community. That morning, I went to the Ray House, they had their open house. If there are any of you citizens that haven't had an opportunity to visit the Ray House museum, you should take time to go and visit it, it's an important part of our history. And then later on, I tried to catch Councilman Shelton at LaHeim, but missed him, but again, we have volunteers that are offering their services to make the community better. And then the Christmas at the Littleton, again, we had so many volunteers and so many people involved, that it was, it was a good feeling, it was a lot of community coming together. And I wanted to say to Inez, I had some really wonderful comments about the tree, that it made it, made lighting of the tree very special this year, instead of just flipping the switch and the lights coming on, it, it was special, so thank you for all your hard work. I don't know what this community would be without the volunteers, we're lucky to help the people we do, and if there are no other comments, we will adjourn this meeting at twenty minutes till nine, and thank you all for coming.
I knew this was running around, that was, wearing tables, struggling.
Did you?
They didn't see you because I was up there.
Looked like a little worker, you know?
Uh, well, there was some unexpected things happening.
Well, appreciate it.
You know why?
Uh, there's, yeah.
It's the microphone.
Uh, but, thank you, yeah.
Everything, I mean, I think that you went to talk. Oh, yeah.
Seeing you as well.
Well, you're right, I couldn't make it to that.
I'm fitting it.
The same, I, I talked to Phil very often.
Thank you, you're awesome.
Looks great, um, thank you.